Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Day of Maloney and Moore's Paradeum, Antay Kahlir Rani. The acronym is ANPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Consular Court. Today is Class 84, Class 84. What did we learn in Class 83? Well, we're still going over the Charter of the United Nations of 1945, right? And we finished up reading Chapter 5. Now we're starting to go into Chapter 6, right? It's about the Pacific Settlement. But what did we learn in Class 83? We started learning a little bit more about what's called Law and History regarding who? Moors. What type of moors? Moroccan moors, right? What did we learn about the Moroccan Treaties that represents moors? What we learned is a sequential order of a timeline based upon Moroccan law. And what was one of the first Moroccan laws we learned about? We learned about the Act of Outsetters of 1906. And the Act of Outsetters of 1906 set up reforms. And since the moors were now not adhering to those reforms, the Sultan brings in France in 1912 to enact said reforms, right? So then in 1914, the diplomatic body Etangiers now dissolves itself. And what does that diplomatic body now transfer itself to? The League of Nations, which is located where? In Paris, France. So France had the obligation of the Pien to start to enact Moroccan reforms on behalf of the what? Sharifian Empire and on behalf of who? Moroccan moors, because Moroccan moors was the Maghreb. Moroccan moors was supposed to oversee the Sharifian Empire in addition to the Sultan, right? But the Sultan turns around in 1912 and gives the Pien to France to oversee the empire, right? To oversee police, oversee arms, oversee banking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, right? So the League of Nations is established in 1920 and France immediately starts to enact Moroccan law. And then the League of Nations as an organization dissolved itself in 1946. And they transferred those principles of Moroccan law into the United Nations Charter of 1945. And to this very day, this present day of December of 2022, the United Nations Charter now acts as the diplomatic body on behalf of the Moroccan empire. But who is absent at this time? Who is not a party that has not made a special appearance at this time? The Sultan. There's no more Sultan, right? Sultan stepped down in 1956. Who should have been the automatic successor of the Pien to step up to oversee the empire? It should have been the Moors government, right? What type of moors? Moroccan moors, right? So in the absence of the moors, and since France stepped down in 1956, the United States of America has stepped up to take over the empire to oversee the seat of the Sultan and oversee the seat of the Maghreb, which is the Moors Empire, right? So United States of America now has become a limited successor of the Pien. And that must be understood. So right now, the United States of America and the United States International Organization is overseeing the trust and the manager of our empire. And that is the truth. This is why moors must understand law and history. So as we learn in Class 83, we have to start recognizing the Charter as being Moroccan law. And in the absence of the moors, the United States of America is now sitting in the seat of the office of the Sultan and also overseeing the Maghreb, which is the Moors government. So therefore, the United States of America right now is acting like moors and governing the world through the Charter of the United Nations. That must be understood, all right? So let's go ahead and get into Class 84. You know, we always open up with the Constitution. As an example, this is ANPAC's Constitution. All the moors meet their own Constitution. This is referred to as Udi Positius jurisdiction, right? Your Constitution will outline your latitude longitude of your state, right? So the Constitution is very important, moors, right? That's the first first step in the triple principle. Sogten independence is commonly known as Udi Positius jurisdiction. You must declare your independence through your Constitution and your Constitution must be ratified, deposited, promulgated in accordance to international law, right? Okay, let's go ahead and move on. Okay, so we're reading the Charter. Now we're into Chapter 6, all right? What's called the Pacific Settlement of Disputes, all right? So as a quick overview, let's take a look at the book. Right now, we're still in the Charter of the United Nations of 1945, Chapter 6. It's about the Pacific Settlement of Disputes. So as a as a basic overview really quickly, right? What is Chapter 6 all about? Chapter 6 is about a prior recognition and a consent to an ipso facto compulsory court to settle disputes between states. That's what Chapter 6 is all about, all right? It's a provision that all the states on planet Earth have agreed to settle their contentious disputes in a competent court. What type of court? A court that they have recognized to be able to come in as a third-party court to oversee the jurisdiction of two separate states. Both states representing two different jurisdictions, they're bringing a third state, right? Not a third state, but a third court, right? Such as a Consular Court, right? They bring in the now the ICJ to come in as a third court, right? To come in over these two separate states to have a contentious dispute. So now the ICJ comes in under ipso facto jurisdiction because the two states have recognized the ICJ through the Charter of Chapter 6. Okay, this is all about jurisdiction of courts, recognizing courts in advance. That's why I have this word right here, "prior" in a box. That's the most important word. Prior recognition and the consent to an ipso facto compulsory court to settle disputes between states. So all states who become a member to the Charter have already agreed to allow the ICJ to come in to settle any contentious disputes, right? So whether you're a member of the Charter or a non-member state, you still have to abide by what's called the Pacific Settlement of Disputes, all right? That must be understood. Okay, let's go ahead and get into Chapter 6. We'll go ahead and start off with the title. We'll have Sister Nova go ahead and read for us. Article 33.
Article 33, 1. The parties to any dispute, the continuance of which is likely to endanger the maintenance of international peace and security, shall first of all seek a solution by negotiation, inquiry, mediation, conciliation, arbitration, judicial settlement, resort to regional agencies or arrangements, or other peaceful means of their own choice. 2. The Security Council shall, when it deems necessary, call upon the parties to settle their dispute by such means. Article 34. The Security Council may investigate any dispute or any situation which may lead to international friction or give rise to a dispute in order to determine whether the continuance of the dispute or situation is likely to endanger the maintenance of international peace and security. Article 35. 1. Any member of the United Nations may bring any dispute or any situation of the nature referred to in Article 34 to the attention of the Security Council or of the General Assembly. 2. A state which is not a member of the United Nations may bring to the attention of the Security Council or of the General Assembly any dispute to which it is a party, if it accepts in advance, for the purposes of the dispute, the obligations of Pacific Settlement provided in the present Charter. Number 3. The proceedings of the General Assembly in respect of matters brought to its attention under this article will be subject to the provisions of Articles 11 and 12. Article 36. 1. The Security Council may, at any stage of a dispute of the nature referred to in Article 33 or of a situation of like nature, recommend appropriate procedures or methods of a just- Sorry, number 2. The Security Council should take into consideration any procedures for the settlement of the dispute which have already been adopted by the parties. 3. In making recommendations under the article, the Security Council should also take into consideration that legal disputes should, as a general rule, be referred by the parties to the International Court of Justice in accordance with the provisions of the statute of the court. Article 37. 1. Should the parties to a dispute of the nature referred to in Article 33 fail to settle it by the means indicated in that article, they shall refer it to the Security Council. 2. If the Security Council deems that the continuance of the dispute is in fact likely to endanger the maintenance of international peace and security, it shall decide whether to take action under Article 36 or to recommend such terms of settlement as it may consider appropriate. Article 38. Without prejudice to the provisions of Articles 33 to 37, the Security Council may, if all the parties to any dispute so request, make recommendations to the parties with a view to a Pacific Settlement of the dispute.
All right, thank you very much, Nova. All right, let's go back up and recap. Okay, so we're in Chapter 6. Chapter 6 is about the Pacific Settlement of Disputes, right? And what's Pacific Settlement of Disputes about? It's about already recognizing a court to come in and oversee the proceedings of a contentious dispute between two separate states, all right? So therefore, any members of the Charter have already recognized the International Court of Justice to be said court that oversees that contentious dispute, all right? And all non-member states now must abide by the Charter, even if they're not a member, they must also bring their contentious dispute to the ICJ. That's what Chapter 6 is all about, right? It's about prior consent. That is the key word, "prior consent," okay? So all the moors must understand that once we establish states, the United Nations Charter oversees all states regarding to make sure that everybody maintains peace and security. And how do you maintain peace and security? You bring your contentious dispute to the ICJ, right? However, when it comes to moors, here's what you must understand. The moors have to follow instructions. What is the first instruction the moors have to follow regarding a contentious dispute with the United States of America? We have to now bring in what? Consular Court. That's what our treaty says, right? So let's talk a little bit more about that today. So when the moors now do a little bit more research, this is the website of the United Nations and you can look under Security Council, all right? So under this particular page on their website, it talks about the Pacific Settlement of Disputes, okay? Which is Chapter 6 of UN Charter, all right? So as you look into this furthermore, as you can go down, you can scroll down, we won't read it today, but I would recommend for the moors to take a look at it. It talks about Article 33, which is obligations of parties to a dispute, all right? Matter of fact, we'll go ahead and read this. Article 33 is important. They talk about Article 33 a lot in international law. Article 33.
Article 33, Obligations of Parties to a Dispute. Article 33 of the Charter states that any dispute that is likely to endanger maintenance of international peace and security should first be addressed through negotiation, mediation, or other peaceful means, and states that the Council can call on the parties to use such means to settle their dispute. The repertoire has covered communications from states addressed to the Security Council, highlighting prior attempts to resolve situations, discussions relating to the parties' responsibilities to resolve their conflicts, and other related material. For information relating to Article 33 in recent years, please see Section E below.
All right, so you see this word right here, moors, repertoire, right? Repertoire, right? So let's read this paragraph again. Article 33 of the Charter of the States states that any dispute that is likely to endanger the maintenance of international peace and security should first be addressed through negotiations, mediation, or other peaceful means, and states that the Council can call on the parties to use such means to settle their dispute. The repertoire has covered communications from states addressed to the Security Council, highlighting prior attempts to resolve situations, discussions relating to the parties' responsibilities to resolve their conflicts, and other related material. For information related to Article 33 in recent years, please see Section E below, right? So repertoire, what does repertoire mean? That's a French word. Let's look that word up for those moors who are curious. Sister Nova?
Repertoire. In the French law, this word is used to denote the inventory or minutes which notaries are required to make of all contracts which take place before them.
All right, so repertoire, right? So the United Nations is keeping up with contracts, all types of disputes, right? So at this time, you can scroll down, you can click on all the typically highlighted areas to learn more about the repertoire, which is an inventory list of contracts, of how the United Nations have dealt with disputes in the past. You can learn more about a lot of different situations and scenarios stayed on state contentious disputes regarding the Security Council, regarding how they came to a conclusion, all right? So if I scroll down, just to give you a quick brief, Article 34 is about investigation of disputes and fact-finding. Article 35, 11 and 99 refer to disputes and situations to the Security Council. You can read about that. It gives you additional repertoire, which goes into more details about the Security Council, how they dealt with situations. Section D, Articles 36 through 38. In Chapter 6, in general, recommendations to the parties so that the Security Council and the General Assembly can give recommendations to the parties on how to settle a dispute before it goes to the ICJ, right? Okay, here's some cases you can look into, repertoire, okay? Section E. Decisions of the Security Council concerning Pacific Settlement of Dispute, okay? Here's some decisions the Security Council has made regarding two contentious disputes before it went to the ICJ, all right? You can look into that and click on some of these things, okay? So access the entire section on Pacific Settlement of Disputes, Chapter 6, several different case studies, all right? It's just case study, moors, it's case study, all right? Case study. Okay, so scrolling back up. So it's about the obligations, Article 33, about obligations of parties to a dispute. All about obligations, so international law, going back to the Charter. Article 33 is about obligations, right? So here's what moors must learn about Article 33. We have to check these boxes, moors. When we deal with the United States of America or any other state that we have a contentious dispute with, we must first seek mediation, then arbitration, and then judicial settlement, right? So how do we deal with mediation? That's where your Minister for Foreign Affairs comes in, right? That's your Ha Jee. Your Ha Jee deals with mediation. And when mediation fails, who's up next? Now you got who? The Mufti. The Mufti Consul General deals with arbitration. And then the Mufti Consul General can now petition who? The Consular Court to deal with a judicial settlement. Or the Mufti Consul General and the Minister for Foreign Affairs can petition the Secretary General of the United Nations, the Security Council, and the General Assembly, and the International Court of Justice to petition now that we have a contentious dispute that now requires a judicial settlement or simply requires mediation, arbitration, and judicial settlement from the United Nations and their General Assembly, Security Council, right? And potentially even the ICJ. So these are boxes that moors have to check. Mediation first, arbitration second, judicial settlement third, all right? That's what that's all about, right? So they set these things up in Article 3. Article 33, which is very important to all the moors. Why is this so important? Because the United States of America has agreed to these terms and conditions. So has more states. Those more states who have now ratified, right? Become a party too. They've acceded to the Charter. Have also agreed to maintain mediation, arbitration, and seeking judicial settlement if in fact your political negotiations have fallen apart. Then you must seek judicial settlement, all right? Let's let good brother Pierre, right? I talk about good brother Pierre a lot. This is good brother Pierre. His YouTube channel is called International Law Mock. He has about 21,000 subscribers. This is where I learned a lot about international law from good brother Pierre. I recommend all the moors go back and subscribe to his channel, all right? He has 100 classes, short classes. Let's watch class number 68, which is called "The Obligation to Settle Disputes Peacefully." It's about 11 minutes, all right? So let's listen to it.
For many centuries, war was not the only, but the ultimate way to settle international disputes. As Clausewitz famously wrote, I quote, "War is not merely an act of policy, but a true political instrument, a continuation of political intercourse carried on with other means," end of quote. And through its modus operandi, which is material destruction and death, the purpose of war is to compel the enemy to fulfill the will of the victorious power. And because states were for a long time free under international law to resort to the use of force, they were entitled to obtain through war the settlement of any dispute in the form of a valid peace treaty. A peace treaty containing the terms of the settlement of the dispute that was the reason for the war, together with the terms of the settlement of the new situation resulting from the war. And the treaty was of course imposed as a result of the war through coercion and violence. But it was nevertheless perfectly valid and binding on the defeated state because such coercion was not illegal. The defeated and coerced state could not claim that its consent to the peace treaty was defective as the means for such duress, that is war, was not illegal. And as we have seen when discussing Article 52 of the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties, and that was during Week 4, and as we shall see next week, things have dramatically changed with and since the outlawing of war. Because as a matter of principle, and absent specific circumstances that we shall study, states may not anymore resort to the use of force. They must settle their disputes by peaceful means. The prohibition to use force and the obligation to settle disputes peacefully are the two sides of the same coin. The obligation not to settle disputes, but to settle them by resorting only to peaceful means, that obligation is well-established under international law. It is one of the founding principles of the United Nations. Under Article 2, Paragraph 3 of the UN Charter, I quote, "All members shall," not should, but shall, "all members shall settle their international disputes by peaceful means in such a manner that international peace and security and justice are not endangered," end of quote. Under Article 33, Paragraph 1 of the UN Charter, I quote again, "The parties to any dispute, the continuance of which is likely to endanger the maintenance of international peace and security, shall first of all seek a solution by negotiation, inquiry, mediation, conciliation, arbitration, judicial settlement, resort to regional agencies or arrangements, or other peaceful means of their own choice," end of quote. Those provisions have been repeated and expanded by the 1970 General Assembly's Declaration on Principles of International Law concerning friendly relations that you know already. And that declaration, the ICJ declared that it reflected customary international law. And I quote from the declaration, "Every state shall settle its international disputes with other states by peaceful means in such a manner that international peace and security and justice are not endangered. States shall accordingly seek early and just settlement of their international disputes by negotiations, inquiry, mediation, conciliation, arbitration, judicial settlement, resort to regional agencies or arrangements, or other peaceful means of their own choice," end of quote. In the Nicaragua versus United States case, the International Court of Justice stated that, I quote, "The principle that the parties to any dispute, particularly any dispute the continuance of which is likely to endanger the maintenance of international peace and security, should seek a solution by peaceful means is a principle that has the status of customary law," end of quote. As you can see from Article 33 and from the 1970 Declaration, states are free to resort to any means of settlement, to means of their own choice, provided however that those means are peaceful. At most, states could, for instance, toss a coin, draw the short straw, or throw the dice to settle their disputes. And that would certainly not be illegal under international law because those are peaceful means. But it is of course very unlikely to happen for many reasons that are very easy to imagine. The various means to settle international disputes are traditionally classified into categories. There are political means and judicial means of settlement. The distinction does not relate to the nature of the dispute, but to the nature of the process of settlement and to the powers of the actors of such settlement. Besides, the idea that certain disputes could be of a purely political nature and therefore not suitable for settlement through judicial means, that idea must be rejected and has been rejected. It is true that an international dispute has very often a political dimension, but conversely, it rarely has no legal dimension. And as international law continues to develop, it will almost always be possible to phrase a political dispute in legal terms or at least to identify within a larger political dispute some of its legal aspects. And this does not mean that judicial means of settlement are always advisable. No, certain disputes could not reasonably be thoroughly settled by a judge or by an arbitrator, and they best require a negotiated and mutually agreed compromise. But this does not mean neither that an international judge or an arbitrator should decline to exercise its jurisdiction because of the larger political dimension of the legal aspects of the dispute and it is entitled to adjudicate about those legal aspects. There is a long string of cases in which international courts and tribunals have rejected the suggestion that they should declare the claim inadmissible because of its wider political nature or context. And notably, in the case relating to the American diplomatic and consular staff held hostage in Tehran, but also in the Nicaragua versus US case, two cases that we have already come across, the ICJ very clearly made that point. The key differences between the political and the judicial means of settlement are twofold. First, the political means ultimately rest on the final consent of the states concerned. Under the political means, a settlement is never imposed upon the disputing states. They must always ultimately consent to such outcome in order for it to be legally binding on them. In contrast, the judicial outcome is imposed on the parties by an independent third organ, and it is binding on them. However, and this is fundamental, the very existence of any judicial means of settlement always depends on the consent of the disputing states to it. In other words, the decision of an international court or tribunal may be binding on the parties, but it is binding because the parties have expressly consented to submit the dispute to adjudication. Absent such consent, there is no power to adjudicate. And this will be made clear again when talking about arbitration and the ICJ. But to sum up quickly, consent of the disputing parties is key, both for political and judicial means of settlement. However, consent must exist at the very beginning in case of a judicial settlement, while it must also exist at the end of the process in case of a political settlement. The second difference between political and judicial means is as follows. Judicial means are predicated on the application of pre-existing rules of international law, at least that is the fiction, rather than on the creation of new rules. In contrast, the political means may result in the conclusion of a treaty with new obligations or obligations which derogate from previous obligations. Judicial settlement is a process of adjudication by which, after the parties have been given the chance to fully present their views, their arguments, and the evidence, a third independent organ takes a binding decision on the basis of existing rules of international law. In other words, the judge or the arbitrator is called to give reasons for its decision, reasons that are based on the rules binding on the parties at the time of the events that gave rise to the dispute. And those differences are essential. And with them in mind, let us turn to the various political means of settlement. Those means are political, but they are nevertheless regulated to a certain extent by rules of international law. And that's what we are going to see.
All right, thank you, good brother Pierre. Like I said, your brother Pierre is an excellent teacher in international law. You know, Nobudal Ali- You know, Nobudal Lee said, "Go to those who know law," right? Your brother Pierre knows law. He represented people at the ICJ. He's very well-versed in international law and I recommend all the Moors to study good brother Pierre wherever he has some extra time, right? Here's one of the things I want the Moors to understand about what brother Pierre keeps talking about. He keeps talking about consent, right? He keeps talking about consent. Let's go back to the six-minute mark, okay, six-minute mark.
That an international dispute has very often a political dimension, but conversely, it rarely has no legal dimension. And as international law continues to develop, it will almost always be possible to phrase a political dispute in legal terms or at least to identify within a larger political dispute some of its legal aspects. And this does not mean that judicial means of settlement are always advisable. No, certain disputes could not reasonably be thoroughly settled by a judge or by an arbitrator and they best require a negotiated and mutually agreed compromise. But this does not mean neither that an international judge or an arbitrator should decline to exercise its jurisdiction because of the larger political dimension of the legal aspects of the dispute, and it is entitled to adjudicate about those legal aspects. There is a long-
So when good brother Pierre says, "We're entitled," the Moors are entitled to enforce their counsel court orders, right? But what gives us the power to do that? It's our treaties, right? United States America has already consented to our treaties. Let's keep listening, listen.
...of cases in which international courts and tribunals have rejected the suggestion that they should declare the claim inadmissible because of its wider political nature or context. And notably, in the case relating to the American diplomatic and consular staff held hostage in Téhéran, but also in the Nicaragua versus US case, two cases that we have already come across, the ICJ very clearly made that point. The key differences between the political and the judicial means of settlement are twofold. First, the political means ultimately rest on the final consent of the states concerned. Under the political means, a settlement is never imposed upon the disputing states.
You know, as he talks about consent, right? Both parties have to agree in advance, must have prior consent to the jurisdiction of a particular court in order to settle a dispute. If a party such as another state, right? And we're dealing with contentious dispute with another state. If that state has not accepted and recognized the jurisdiction of the court that's going to oversee that case, then that state, State A, State B, right? So State A has not recognized the jurisdiction of the consul court or the ICJ, then State B cannot bring State A into that particular court, all right? So therefore, through the United Nations Charter, all the states have already agreed in advance to allow the ICJ to be the recognized court that all states can use on planet Earth, all right? That must be understood. However, how does this relate to Moors? Well, the United States America has already consented to our court jurisdictions through our treaties. We'll talk about that. Listen.
...always ultimately consent to such outcome in order for it to be legally binding on them. In con-
So in order for our consul court orders to be legally binding on the United States of America, first we have to prove that we have jurisdiction, right? So let's talk about jurisdiction a little bit more. Let's move away from Pierre. Like I said, go back and study good brother Pierre. You'll learn a lot from him. So going back to the Charter, the Charter says under Article thirty-three that the parties to any dispute, the continuance of which is likely to endanger the maintenance of international peace and security, shall, first of all, seek a solution by negotiation, inquiry, mediation, conciliation, arbitration, and then judicial settlement, right? So the Moors are seeking, at this time, we're seeking negotiations. How is it that we're seeking negotiations? Because we have already negotiated our proper claims to our constitution. Our constitution was the first step in the triple principle. That's negotiating now diplomatic relations, right? So through your constitution, you claim your jurisdiction. Also through your constitution, you recognize yourself as having a judicial branch, right? So you're already negotiating through the proper written instrument commonly called an application. That applications, the friendly application according to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, Article twenty-four, your constitution is already setting up negotiations. It's setting up inquiry. So United States America is advocated to come back and perform an inquiry to make sure that your constitution is actually ratified, be positive, promulgated in accordance to international law, which is following the instructions of Article one oh two of the Charter, right? Then immediately, if in fact there's a contentious dispute, you get into mediation, which is diplomatic relations. Then you get into arbitration, which is potentially consul relations. And then you get into judicial settlement, which is either through your consul court or you automatically petition the ICJ, the General Assembly, or the Security Council members, right? To deal with this contentious dispute, all right? So listen, Moors. So what's happening? Here's the case of France versus the United States of America. We've talked about this quite often. The United States of America loves to get pushed back and claim that another contentious dispute does not have jurisdiction, that they can't even be a party plaintiff to a case to even bring a suit to the United States of America. But what the United States of America did in their arrogance in nineteen fifty, they caused France to take the United States of America to court concerning taxes. And within this case, what's commonly known as the case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America, proper party name, in Morocco. So the United States of America is in Morocco and France was overseeing the jurisdiction of Morocco because of the Treaty of Fairs of nineteen twelve. So France had the jurisdiction, they had the judicial power, they have the administrative power, and they have the legislative power to bring the United States of America into court. But the United States of America is always going to get pushed back to challenge jurisdiction. That's the only thing they know. That's their first trick they do is try to get pushed back to your jurisdiction, right? So in this case, we automatically start to find out something about the United States of America. We go down now to page seven, okay? Now, on this case, this particular copy is page one seventy-nine, okay, of the judgment, okay? So we're going to read really quickly about what France opened up and talked about regarding jurisdiction, okay? The reason why we're reading this is going to find out that France was saying, "No, the treaties are enforced." And the United States of America has already agreed and consented to the treaties. And the treaties is what's given the consent to bring in consul court, right? So the United States of America has already agreed to consul court. And the United States of America through the Charter has already agreed to take a case to the ICJ, right? So let's see the argument that France used to bring the United States of America into court regarding what? Consent. What type of consent? Right here. Prior consent. Our treaties already gave Moors and France prior consent to have the compulsory jurisdiction over any case, any dispute between Moors, Morocco, and the United States of America, right? And France is now exercising that right that the United States of America already gave prior recognition and the consent to an ipso facto compulsory court to settle dispute between states, all right? Okay, so let's get started. This is France opening up first. All right, so this is France talking, okay?
Okay. On behalf of the French government, may it please the court to adjudge and declare that the privileges of the nationals of the United States of America in Morocco are only those which result from the text of Articles twenty and twenty-one of the Treaty of September sixteenth, eighteen thirty-six, and that since the most favored nation clause contained in Article twenty-four of the said treaty can no longer be invoked by the United States in the present state of the international obligations of the Sharifian Empire. There is nothing to justify the granting to the nationals of the United States of preferential treatment which would be contrary to the provisions of the treaties.
Okay, so as soon as we open up, the first thing that France does, first thing they do is recognize the proper party name. France says that the privileges, privileges, privileges. The United States of America and their citizens have privileges in Morocco. So that the privileges of the nationals of the United States of America, did they say the United States? No. They called them by their proper party name. The United States of America, where? In Morocco. Are only those which result from the text of the Articles twenty and twenty-one of the Treaty of September sixteen, eighteen thirty-six, which is the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. You see that? So why did France open up with that immediately? Because they're already proven beyond a reasonable doubt, beyond a reasonable doubt. Then you now go to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. This is eighteen thirty-six, right? Article twenty and twenty-one is what France opens up with. Why is that? Because the United States of America already signed this treaty, right? Right? So they've already signed it. Let's go back up real quick. They've already signed. Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Here's their dates, right? This is the proof of their dates, right? They signed it. Treaty sealed by the Emperor Morocco at Meconis, September first, eighteen thirty-six, and signed for the United States, October first, eighteen thirty-six. Not only did they sign it, they turned around and did what? They ratified it. You see that? They ratified and proclaimed. What does proclaim mean? Promulgated. So they checked all the boxes. They ratified, prompted, promulgated, it's enforced, right? So therefore, you go back now to Article twenty. Article twenty now is why France is saying, "Okay, so now the United States of America has already consented in advance." They've already recognized the civil and criminal jurisdiction of Moors courts, Moroccan courts of the Moroccan government in Morocco to oversee all disputes. This is why France opens up, right? So Article twenty, "If any of the citizens of the United States or any person under their protection should have any dispute with each other, the consul shall decide between the parties." Which consul? Consul court, right? "The consul shall decide between the parties. And whenever the consul shall require any aid or assistance from our government," who's the government? Government of Morocco. "To enforce his decision," who's decision? The consul court judge, the chief kazi. "It shall be immediately granted to him." This is what France is saying to the ICJ and to the United States of America. The United States of America, y'all already read Articles twenty and twenty-one. You move to Article twenty-one. "If a citizen of the United States should kill or wound a Moor," right? Because it's talking about the Moroccan government. "Or, on the contrary, if a Moor shall kill or wound a citizen of the United States, the law of the country," what country? Morocco. "The law of Morocco shall take place, and equal justice shall be rendered, the consul assisting at the trial, and if any delinquent shall make his escape, the consul shall not be answerable for him and any man whatsoever." So keep in mind, this is a bilateral treaty, not a multilateral treaty. So the United States of America is in Morocco and they've already consented to Articles twenty and twenty-one regarding civil and criminal jurisdiction, all right? So France opens up. And immediately goes into this case, okay? Let's continue from where we left off.
That the government of the United States of America is not entitled to claim that the application of all laws and regulations to its nationals in Morocco requires its express consent.
Pause. Listen. That the government of the United States of America is not entitled to claim that the application of all laws and regulations to its nationals in Morocco, to the United States of America's nationals are where? In Morocco, requires an express consent. So what France is saying, France did not have to get the United States of America's express consent to enforce consul jurisdiction against the United States of America. You see? Why? Because the United States of America already signed the treaties, right? So France is acting in the place of Moors. They went through inauguration, according to the Treaty of Fairs of nineteen twelve, France had an opportunity to take the United States of America to court. France had the jurisdiction, any obligation based upon reforms to bring any dispute against the United States of America, right? So why was the United States of America giving pushback to France? You know why they were doing that? I'll tell you why. Because they're trying to say France is not what? A Moor. You see? So the United States of America was challenging France, saying, "France, you're not Moors. It's supposed to be the Moors government bringing a dispute. It's supposed to be the Moroccan government bringing a dispute." This is why the United States of America was challenging it. However, the United States of America already was perfectly aware that France already had permission under the Treaty of Fairs of nineteen twelve, that the Sultan already gave France permission in nineteen twelve to bring any suit against all the secretary powers. So the United States already knew that France had jurisdiction to oversee all the treaties, right? So the United States likes to play games though. Okay, let's go back to it. So this is about consent, Moors. Let's keep it germane. The United Nations Charter, Pacific Settlement Agreement is about what? Let's read the board. It's about prior recognition and the consent to an ipso facto compulsory court to settle disputes between states. So France is a state. The United States of America at this time is acting like a state, right? So now they can bring that contentious dispute to court. So France is saying, "We've already exercised consul court. The United States of America didn't listen." So now France is doing what? Taking them to the ICJ. You see? Okay, let's continue to listen to what France was saying. Let's continue.
Okay. That the nationals of the United States of America in Morocco are subject to the laws and regulations in force in the Sharifian Empire and in particular the regulation of December thirtieth, nineteen forty-eight, on imports not involving an allocation of currency without the prior consent of the United States government.
All right. What's important here? France says to what? To the United States of America and talking to the ICJ and the judges says, "That the nationals of the United States of America in Morocco are subject to the laws and regulations in force in the Sharifian Empire." You see how France is using these words? They say, "In Morocco, Sharifian Empire." They're pulling all the words, right? Out of what? The Act of Al-Dosiris of nineteen oh six talks about the Sharifian Empire, okay? All right, let's continue. No, 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 right here. That's what I need to point out. Let's start right here. "That the nationals of the United States of America in Morocco are subject to the laws and regulations in force in the Sharifian Empire," right? Now, right here, let's just finish. "And in particular the regulation December thirtieth, nineteen forty-eight, which was a trade agreement, okay? That's irrelevant, on imports not involving allocation of currency without the prior consent of the United States government." So France is saying because of what? The Sharifian Empire, which is the Act of Al-Dosiris, right? So first they've already mentioned what? What did they mention first?
Articles twenty and twenty-one.
First they opened up talking about the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of eighteen thirty-six. Then France starts to tell them about the Sharifian Empire, which is now establishing jurisdiction of the- Act of Al-Dosiris of nineteen oh six. See how France is bringing in two treaties already? And saying, "The United States of America has already signed the Act of Al-Dosiris of nineteen oh six." And that because of that, France does what? France does not need prior consent from the United States of America to enforce Moroccan treaties. Because the United States of America already signed the Act of Al-Dosiris, right? Nineteen oh six, nineteen oh seven. Let's continue. This is about consent, Moors. This is about consent. The United States of America has already consented to Moors and their Moor states and their consul courts. We just have to enforce it. Let's continue.
That the decree of December thirtieth, nineteen forty-eight concerning the regulation of imports not involving an allocation of currency is in conformity with the economic system which is applicable to Morocco. According to the conventions which bind France and the United States, that Article ninety-five of the Act of Al-Dosiris defines value for customs purposes as the value of the merchandise at the time and at the place where it is presented for customs clearance. That no treaty has conferred on the United States fiscal immunity for its nationals in Morocco, either directly or through the effect of the most favored nation clause. That the laws and regulations on fiscal matters which have been put into force in the Sharifian Empire are applicable to the nationals of the United States without the prior consent of the government of the United States. That consequently, consumption taxes provided by the Daher of February twenty-eighth, nineteen forty-eight have been legally collected from the nationals of the United States and should not be refunded to them.
All right, so what is France getting into? France is enforcing the treaties. And France is saying, "United States of America already-" And France is saying, the United States of America already consented to the one hundred and twenty-three articles of the Act of Al-Dosiris. And some of those articles go back to now, like Article ninety-five talks about consumption taxes, right? But what's supposed to remain here? Listen, Moors, France is saying that the laws and regulations on fiscal matters which have been put into force, that the laws and regulations on fiscal matters which have been put into force in the Sharifian Empire, Act of Al-Dosiris, are applicable to the nationals of the United States without the prior consent of the government of the United States. Did you, did you see, did you catch what just happened? Not only did they say, France said, we don't need your prior consent, cause you already signed the treaty, but guess what name they pointed out now? See? The United States. So they already pointed out the United States of America as a legal personality. Now they pointed at the United States as a legal personality, saying both the United States of America and the United States. We don't need to get consent from neither one of those legal personalities. Keep in mind, France is acting in the place of Moors. This is how Moors have to talk to the United States of America. This is plug and play. This is what Moors must understand. You replace France, you add your Moors Qazi, your Chief Qazi of your Counselor Court. Now this is the way you talk to the United States of America. But France has already given us the blueprint on how to do it. Keep in mind, this is germane about the Charter of the United Nations. Article six talks about what? Let's talk about it. Article six is about what? Pacific Settlement of Dispute. Which is an obligation where states have already given prior consent to recognize a court's jurisdiction. And France is already schooling the Moors, letting the Moors know, the United States of America has already consented to these Moroccan treaties and to our counsel courts. And that what? The Moors don't need what? The Moors don't need to do what? Here we go, that the laws and regulations on fiscal matters which have been put into force in the Sharifian Empire, i.e. the Moroccan Empire, are applicable to the nationals of the United States without the prior consent of the government of the United States and of the United States of America. Let's continue.
That consequently, consumption taxes provided by the Daher of February twenty-eighth nineteen forty-eight have been legally collected from the nationals of the United States and should not be refunded to them.
So you can see, the United States was paying taxes to France. So imagine if France was collecting taxes from the United States, guess what the Moors can do? Right? Because why? Going back to our treaties. Treaty of eighteen thirty-six mentions the word what? Moors. Moors can collect the taxes. But France is acting in the absence of the Moors that are asleep at this time. During nineteen fifty-two, right? Now let's see what the United States has to say. Alright.
On behalf of the United States, on behalf of the government of the United States, one, the submission and conclusions presented by the French government in this case should be rejected on the ground that the French government has failed to maintain the burden of proof which is assumed as party plaintiff, and by reason of the nature of the legal issues involved. Two, the treaty rights of the United States in Morocco forbid Morocco to impose prohibitions in American imports save the, those specified by the treaties, and these rights are still in full force and effect.
Pause, okay, listen to what the United States does. Now first of all, the parties must be known, look who's talking. The United States, not the United States of America. Why isn't the United States of America doing the talking at the ICJ? Because the United States of America don't have no government. The United States of America don't have no Mr. Foreign Affairs, only the United States does. The United States of America don't have no president, only the United States does. The United States of America doesn't have no Mr. Plenary Potentia, only the United States does. The United States is doing business under the guise of the United States of America. And this is the reason why the United States speaking up and not the United States of America. But France pointed out the parties as the United States of America and the United States International Organization. And look who's already admitting on the record, who was there in nineteen fifty to nineteen fifty-two, speaking? It was the United States and not the United States of America. Let's continue. Number one. The submission and conclusions presented by the French government in this case should be rejected on the ground that the French government has failed to maintain the burden of proof which is assumed as party plaintiff. You're trying to say France didn't have jurisdiction to bring the case. Cause they said France is not what? Moors. Right? This is why the United States is giving pushback. But the reality is, the Treaty Affairs of nineteen twelve gave France an inauguration to oversee the pen in the absence of the Moors. Okay? Let's start from the top, the submission and conclusions presented by the French government, this is the United States talking. And the case should be rejected on the ground that the French government has failed to maintain the burden of proof which is assumed as party plaintiff, and by reason of the nature of the legal issues involved. This is the same game the United States plays on everybody on planet Earth. The same game they play with Moors right now in Morocco, right? They're always rejecting everybody's jurisdiction, that's what they do. It's a knee jerk. Section two. The treaty rights of the United States in Morocco, you hear what they said? So the United States of America, the United States is where?
In Morocco.
In Morocco, that's what they said. This is ICJ judgment, World Court, the United States admits where they're located geographically. They're in Morocco. Okay, let's start over, section two. The treaty rights of the United States in Morocco forbid Morocco to impose prohibitions on American imports save those specified by the treaties. And these rights are still in full force and effect. What the United States? Just state for the record about Moors treaties. That all the treaties are still in full force and effect. Nineteen fifty-two. So they're helping the Moors understand, yes, our treaty is still in force and full effect. Which means Moors can bring what? Our counsel courts against them. Okay? Let's continue.
The Daher of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight imposing a prohibition on imports is in direct contravention of the treaty rights of the United States forbidding prohibitions on American imports and the French government by applying the Daher of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight to American nationals without the consent of the United States from December thirty-first nineteen forty-eight to May eleventh nineteen forty-nine violated the treaty rights of the United States and was guilty of a breach of international law.
Pause, okay. So this is what the United States is saying for the record. Who's not speaking at this time? The United States of America. The United States is speaking up, right? Cause the United States is what you call an international law, an international organization. However, what is their proper status while they're talking here at the court? They're acting as a constituent. A constituent agent, right? A constituent agent on behalf of the United States of America. Alright, a constituent agent, alright? The Daher of December thirty of nineteen forty-eight forty-eight imposing a prohibition on imports is in direct contravention of the treaty rights of the United States forbidding prohibitions on American imports and the French government by applying the Daher of December thirty of nineteen forty-eight to American nationals without the consent of the United States from December thirty-first nineteen forty-eight to May eleventh nineteen forty-nine violated the treaty rights of the United States and was guilty of breach of international law. So what the United States of America is saying right here and the United States is saying France was breaching United States treaty rights, what treaty? Oh, Moroccan treaty rights. Imagine that, the audacity that the United States of America, the United States is using Moors treaties to defend themselves against France. And talking about their treaty rights. That their treaty right, someone violated their treaty rights of the United States and was guilty of a breach of international law. The United States is trying to say France was guilty of breaching international law. That's very rich. For the United States of America or the United States to talk about anybody on planet Earth being guilty of a breach of international law.
Who are they?
Right? Talk about hypocrisy. What's important here? We're still talking about consent. See, the United States of America understands consent. But they act like they have amnesia regarding the fact they've already consented to Moors treaties. But they're giving pushback to France, cause they don't want to pay the taxes. They'd rather take their chances in court to see if the ICJ will give them a favorable response. Right, let's continue.
American nationals cannot legally be submitted to the Daher of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight without the prior consent of the United States, which operates to waive temporarily its treaty rights. Three, the jurisdiction conferred upon the United States by the treaties of seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six was jurisdiction civil and criminal in all cases arising between American citizens. In addition, the United States acquired in Morocco jurisdiction in all cases in which an American citizen or protege was defendant through the effect of the most favored nation clause and through custom and usage. Such jurisdiction was not affected by the surrender by Great Britain in nineteen thirty-seven of its rights of jurisdiction in the French zone of Morocco.
Okay, let's dive into this real quick, more, we're talking jurisdiction? We're talking prior consent? The United States of America and the United States have already agreed to what? The civil and criminal jurisdiction of Moroccan treaties. But listen. American nationals cannot legally be submitted to the Daher of December thirty of nineteen forty-eight without the prior consent of the United States, which operates to waive temporarily its treaty rights. Number three, the jurisdiction conferred upon the United States by the treaties of seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six was jurisdiction civil and criminal in all cases arising between American citizens and who? Moors, listen. Listen. American citizens and who? The United States. And who? Moors. You see that? But they didn't want to say the word Moor, did they? They didn't want to say it, they didn't want to say it out loud. Here's what they say instead, they say, the jurisdiction conferred upon the United States by the treaties of seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six was jurisdiction civil and criminal in all cases arising between American citizens. Okay, what, between American citizens and who? See how they didn't finish the sentence? But then they go a little deeper, they finally now admit the legal personality they're talking about. It says, in addition, the United States acquired in Morocco jurisdiction in all cases in which an American citizen or protege was defended through the effect of the most favored nation clause and through custom and usage. So they say now, they point out the parties, they're American citizens or protege. So who's American citizen right now? Naftas, Negroes, Blacks, Coloreds, and Moors Americans. And anytime a Moor who works for the United States, any Moors who work for the United States is considered a protege, cause they're protected, cause they worked for the United States government. All the Moors who call themselves Moors Americans, right? Moors Americans come under the protection of the United States of America. Why do they call them Moors Americans? First of all, the United States don't refer to Moors as being Moors Americans. Only Moors refer themselves being Moors Americans. But since Moors keep saying they're Americans, the United States got a jurisdiction over who? The United States got jurisdiction over all Americas. Anyone referencing themselves as being an American citizen, the United States got jurisdiction over them. You see that? Now who else are proteges? Moor subjects. A Moor subject is elevated, right? A Moor subject is elevated, promoted up to protege status. You go from the fields, working in the field, to now working for the man at the White House. That's a protege. Somebody that got governmental credentials, who on a protected persons list. You see? Who else are proteges? Co-Intel Pro Moors who work for the FBI. Those are proteges, they're protected Moors who work on behalf of the United States of America in some type of governmental status, right? So all the American citizens, they're talking about Moors right here, who have been naturalized in a foreign country. They're talking about these American citizens who have been naturalized, that's what? The Treaty of Madrid, eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one, says, any subject of Morocco, that's the American citizen. That's been naturalized in a foreign country, that's, that's the Moors. The Moors have been naturalized and turned into Americans. And now the Americans call themselves a citizen, so Moors call themselves Moors Americans. And proteges was defended through the effect of most favored nation clause and through custom and usage. So now the United States is talking about, we got jurisdiction over these Moors. So if the United States of America got jurisdiction over Moors, that means they got jurisdiction over Morocco. If the United States got jurisdiction over Morocco, then they're saying France don't have the power to bring any type of claim. Because the United States of America is holding on to extraterritoriality jurisdiction, you see what they're fighting over right now? Because they say the Moors are what? Accusates. Listen. Such jurisdiction was not affected by the surrender by Great Britain in nineteen thirty-seven of its rights of jurisdiction in the French zone of Morocco. Let's continue.
Such jurisdiction has never been renounced expressly or implied by the United States. Four, under the regime of extraterritorial jurisdiction now exercised by the United States in Morocco, United States citizens are not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws. Such laws become applicable to the United States citizens only if they are submitted to the prior assent of the United States government, and if this government agrees to make them applicable to its citizens. The Daher of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight not having been submitted to the prior assent of the United States government cannot be made applicable to United States citizens.
See what's happening? So the United States of America is trying to tell France, yeah, we conquered the Moors. Which means we conquered Morocco, which means we conquered the civil and criminal jurisdiction in Morocco. So therefore, France can't enforce any civil criminal jurisdiction in Morocco, cause the Moors are not enforcing their own laws, that's what, that's what the United States of America is saying. Telling France to kick rocks, France, you ain't Moors. Moors been subjugated. And the Moors have agreed to be Negroes, Blacks, Coloreds, and Moors Americans. And there's no such thing as Moors Americans. So therefore, that legal personality of Moors American can't make a claim of civil criminal jurisdiction in Morocco, because there's no such thing as Moors Americans in any of the treaties. Simply Moroccan. Okay? Let's read it again. This is the United States of America saying, or should I say, the United States, right? Acting as an agent on behalf of the United States of America, because the United States of America is void of free branches of government. The United States of America exists in name only, let's continue. Such jurisdiction has never been renounced expressly or implied by the United States. That's very important right there, Moors. You see, the United States just admitted, they're still bound to the treaties. And they're bound to the treaties, cause they, they said themselves, such jurisdiction, what jurisdiction? Moroccan jurisdiction of the Moroccan treaties has never been renounced expressly or impliedly by the United States. The United States is saying they're still bound to the treaties, they're enforcing the treaties upon Moors and upon the jurisdiction of Morocco. So that now that Moors are now restoring their states. Right? Now we're now on what's called post-limineum pro consanguinity. We're restoring our sovereignty, independence, and charter domains and economic liberty without any inequality. Now we can go to the United States and say, the United States, you have not renounced expressly or impliedly the jurisdiction of Moors and their state governments. And since you've already consented to our treaties, now that the Moors have now acceded to their own treaties and ratified, deposited, promulgated, and deposited those treaties with the United Nations in accordance with Article one oh two. Now the Moors can enforce their own treaty rights through counsel court, and the United States is already admitting the jurisdiction. The jurisdiction. The jurisdiction has never been renounced expressly or impliedly by the United States. They're still bound to it. Okay, number four, under the regime of extraterritorial jurisdiction now exercised by the United States in Morocco, United States citizens are not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws. Why would the United States care about Moroccan laws if the United States wasn't in Morocco? You can tell how they're talking, they're very concerned about Moroccan treaties, why? Because Moors and Moroccan law has a civil and criminal jurisdiction over who? United States citizens. So if their job is trying to get pushed back, I don't blame the United States for talking like this. They subjugated the Moors. And if it wasn't for France, the Moors would not be aware of a lot of this language. So they're upset with France. They said, but France, you ain't Moors though. But now the Moors have woke up, the rise of the Moors. But now that the Moors have woke up, the rise of the Moors. The Moors now get to enforce their jurisdiction because the United States America has already expressed consent to our treaties. So right here, the United States America admits that they were maintaining extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco. Now, Moors, you understand Public Law eight fifty-six. Public Law eight fifty-six of the year nineteen fifty-six, right? August first nineteen fifty-six, the United States and the United States America enact Public Law eight fifty-six. Right? Why did they do that? Because right here, you want to find out, the I C J told the United States America, now you've consented to these treaties and you have to abide by those treaties. Because you yourself, the United States, said you've never done what? You've never renounced your obligations to these treaties. And there's nothing in the treaty that says you get an opportunity to say that you don't have to consent to Moroccan law. It doesn't say that in the treaties, right? All right, continue. Let's read it again. Section four. Under the regime of extraterritorial jurisdiction now exercised by the United States in Morocco, United States citizens are not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws. This is what they're saying for the rest. Such laws became applicable to the United States citizens only if they are submitted to the prior ascent, meaning prior of, um, consent, prior consent of the United States government. And if this government agrees to make them applicable to its citizens. Let's stop right there. The United States already agreed to the treaty. But since they subjugated the Moors, they're trying to tell the Moors, the Moors got to get permission to try to enforce their own treaty rights. This is what they're telling the France, but they're telling France these Moors got to get permission first. And the United States America got to agree with it first before the United States even agrees to the treaty provisions. See how they're hypocrites? One minute they telling France, we got a right to enforce treaty rights. Then they turn around and say, but we don't have to agree to treaty rights of Moors until the Moors get our permission, the United States America to agree to, for the treaties to be enforced against citizens of the United States. See, the United States America always wants to enforce treaties on other people, but they don't want other people enforcing the treaties upon them. That's what's happening here, okay? So what happens in the end, okay? That's, what happens in the end? Let's go to now the summary page. This is the summary page of that judgment. The Moors should be familiar with this, okay? Can you read the title, of course?
Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. Judgment on twenty-seven August nineteen fifty-two.
Okay, now you go over to section five. Section five is what the judge has said about the United States America regarding consent, okay?
Five, unanimously, the United States has contended that its nationals were not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws unless these laws have received its prior assent. There is however, no provision in any of the treaties conferring upon the United States such a right. A right linked with the regime of capitulations which can only exist as a corollary of console jurisdiction. So that if the cooperation of the United States counsel courts is required to enforce a law, C two and three above, the assent of the United States is essential. But subject to this, the contention of the United States is ill-founded. If the application of a law to citizens of the United States without its assent is contrary to international law, any dispute which may arise therefrom should be dealt with accordingly to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes.
So the I C J tells the United States, uh, your interpretations are incorrect. If the United States America and the United States International Organization is bound to the treaties and since they've already agreed in advance, right? In advance to prior consent of Articles twenty and twenty-one of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship and if they've already agreed to the prior consent of the counsel court jurisdiction of the Act of Al-Dusers. That must be understood, right? So the United States is already perfectly aware that when, when the Moors start to issue their counsel court orders, that the Moors don't need the prior consent of the United States America or of the United States to issue our judicial opinions or to issue our judicial orders or to issue our judicial judgments against the United States citizens or against the United States of America. That must be understood. Let's read it again. Unanimously, these are all the judges agree at the I C J. The United States had contended that its nationals were not subject in principle. What's the principle? The principle of international law and the principle what? The triple principle of the Act of Al-Dusers. That the treaties are about sovereignty and independence. Our treaties about what? Integrity domains. And our treaties about what? Economic liberty without any inequality. That's the triple principle. That's what the I C J is talking about. Let's start all over. Number five of the summary. Unanimously, the United States had contended that its nationals were not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws unless these laws have received its prior assent, i.e. prior consent. There is however, no provision in any of the treaties conferring upon the United States such a right. A right linked to the regime of capitulations which can only exist as a corollary of council jurisdiction. So that if the cooperation of the United States counsel court is required, if the Moors are still asleep, if the Moors are still acquiescing, the United States America has the right to still oversee counsel court if it's required. The Moors are still asleep. The United States can control counsel court. That's what they're saying. Then they throw a however in there, right? So let's start right here. So that if the cooperation of the United States counsel court is required to enforce a law, C two and three above, the assent of the United States is essential. Meaning if the Moors are still asleep, you, you must now allow the United States to maintain jurisdiction. But when the Moors wake up, ratify, and promulgate their constitution, accede to the treaties and enforce it through their counsel court. Here's what happens next. But, 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 subject to this, the contention of the United States is ill-founded. What does ill-founded mean? What the United States is not, what they're saying is not based in truth. It's not based in fact. It's what? Patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious if the United States said they're not bound to Moroccan law. And the Moors don't need their prior assent. That's what ill-founded means. It means everything they said to try to reject Moors is patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious. All right, if the application of a law to citizens of the United States without its assent is contrary to international law, any dispute which may arise therefrom should be dealt with according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes. What's the ordinary method of how Moors deal with the United States America? It's called counsel court. That's the ordinary method to settle settlement of international dispute. So now you come back over here, right? How do you settle disputes? Okay, it's about prior recognition and the consent to an inso facto compulsory court to settle disputes between states. Now watch this. Why is it the Moors haven't been getting their rights respected? Because Moors didn't have what? A state. Moors were stateless. We were not parties. Treaties are between states. Contentions dispute are between states. Not an individual Moore versus the United States America. Not an individual Moore versus the United States. It has to be a Moors state versus the United States America. The Moors have delayed their own justice because the Moors were stateless. What do I mean when I say stateless? That we violated, we delayed our own justice because we didn't come back and follow the provisions of the what? Treaty of Madrid. Eighteen eighty, Article fifteen says what? Any subject of Morocco that's been naturalized in a foreign country must choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire. And since we didn't do that, we didn't return back to what? The Moroccan state. The empire state, our own individual provincial states in Morocco. That mean we could not enforce our treaties. So in closing, what happens next? Let's go back to the case. So what does the I C J say as a, as a, as a relief, right? You go down to page two oh two, right? Two oh two. What is, what does the I C J tell France? Okay, page two oh two of the judgment. Case is known.
In the absence of any treaty provisions dealing with this matter, it has been contended that a right of assent can be based on custom, usage, and or practice. It is unnecessary to repeat the reasons which have been given for rejecting custom, usage, and practice as a basis for extending council jurisdiction and which are largely applicable to the right of assent. It is however, necessary to point out that the very large number of instances in which Moroccan laws were referred to the United States authorities can readily be explained as a convenient way of ensuring their incorporation in ministerial decrees binding upon the council courts. In that way and in that way only could these laws be made enforceable as against United States nationals so long as the extended council jurisdiction was being exercised.
So the Moors had to do what? We had to do what? We had to exercise the counselor jurisdiction against the United States America. And by that way and that way only could we enforce our Moroccan laws. But look what it says at the top. It says, in the absence of any treaty provisions dealing with this matter. What was in the absence of the treaty provisions? Just right here, Moors were stateless. We were in the absence of our treaty provisions because we did not have a state. We were incompetent Moors who kept giving ourselves the legal personality of a Moors American which cannot be enforced. Moors are Moroccans and we were stateless Moroccans in Morocco. But now that Moors are restoring their constitutions, now that Moors are acceding to our own treaties, now we can enforce our own counsel courts. And by that way and that way only can we enforce Moroccan law according to the I C J and according to France and in accordance to who? Our own Moroccan state governments. So to all the wazirs in Morocco. To all the sairahas and the loizis, which is the legislative branch. To all the chief kazis of what? The judicial branch and all of his judges. The Moors need Moroccan law. And have your chief kazi issue its what? Its minister decrees to the United States America and the United States, all right? So as we start to wrap up, what has A P A C done? A P A C has already issued its first counsel court order from its Udi Pausa Datus jurisdiction commonly known as A P A C, right? So this is a case that was sent out on March fifteenth. It's fifty-five pages. This is the cover page. Alodion Moors Prendi Amati Colorado, Counselor Court of the State, capital S. A provincial state government under the existing and pre-existing sovereignty of the Moroccan Empire. Case concerning treaty rights of Moors nationals in Morocco. Alodion Moors Prendi Amati Colorado against the United States America, United States and the State of Colorado. Order on March fifteen twenty twenty-two. That's fifty-five pages. That went out March fifteenth. What else did A P A C do? Here's another case from counsel court. And by that way and that way only with enforcing Moroccan law. This is Alodion Moors Prendi Amati Colorado, Counselor Court of the State, a provincial state government under the existing and pre-existing sovereignty of the Moroccan Empire. Case concerning former Moroccan subjects and proteges in Morocco. This is the case of Alodion Moors Prendi Amati Colorado versus the State of Colorado. The United States and the United States of America dated order of April twenty-seven twenty twenty-two. Decolonization has started in Morocco. I am with that. Islam.